And everything.
It's been.
Protect them all.
Then they got over and they were on Thursday, on Wednesday. And then.
Uh oh, is it gonna, is it gonna point to us?
Leslie started throwing.
Is the camera gonna point at us or?
It's thinking about it.
Was it Wednesday night? No, she started throwing, they must've got sick Wednesday. She got sick Thursday night. And then I got sick Friday night. So it went through all of us. Some kind of virus that had, that had a little bit longer incubation periods. So.
Sorry.
Yeah, and so on Saturday we were flying back.
Okay. All right, we'd like to call to order our Riverdale City Council meeting for Tuesday, May 21st, 2024. Please let the record show that all members of the city council are present as well as members of the city staff and members of the public. We have asked Mr. Steve Brooks to lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Did y'all rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Brooks. I've asked Counsel Richter if he will offer our invocation.
Our eternal Father in heaven, we're grateful for the opportunity we have to gather together this evening as members of the city council and staff and members of the community of Riverdale, so grateful for the participation and, and interest that everybody has for the well-being and benefit of, of the city. We ask that thy Spirit might be with us, that we might discuss those needs that will benefit the city and, and the citizens that live here and those who visit. Grateful for these opportunities and express, express our gratitude for those who protect us and watch over our, our law enforcement and fire that dedicate so much time to, to our safety. We're grateful for all the, all the time and dedication that people commit to the benefit of this community and ask that thy Spirit continue to be with us and watch over us as we contemplate these matters and ask these things in the name of our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Counsel Richter. We now have a time for public comment. This is an opportunity to address the city council regarding your thoughts or concerns. No action will be taken during the public comment period. If you do approach the microphone, please state your name and city of residence and try to limit your comments to three minutes. Come on up.
My name's Ken Deal, I live in Riverdale and most, some of you know me, but I just have a couple of questions mainly I wanted to ask today if I could. In order to subdivide a piece of property, it's my understanding that you have to involve the planning commission and the city council in order to subdivide it. Is that correct?
Uh. Mister, what, I mean, I can I answer?
Part of the problem, I mean, we could have Brandon respond to this, but this is public comment, we generally don't respond into those. I know he's, he's been in communication with Brandon as well as even before him a number of times. This is, this is not new, the process we followed. If you want Brandon to respond, we could certainly do that, but it wouldn't be something we normally do in this, this part of the meeting.
So, Mr. Hill, it's not usually like a question and answer? If you want to share thoughts, you're welcome to.
Okay, I was hoping to, so are employees of Riverdale City allowed to subdivide property on their own?
I'm sorry, I can't hear.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Mayor Ginn, I feel like I'm an attorney here making objections because again, we're out of order on these kind of things. These aren't things that we would normally respond to in here.
Yeah.
I mean, that, that's kind of a silly question, to be honest with you. Of course, we don't, we don't have power nor do we do that kind of stuff, but that's not something we would generally discuss.
Yeah. I've been fighting with the city for five years and I'm tired of fighting. I don't, I'm just tired of it. And I've tried everything I possibly can to stop the fight and I can't. And so I'm trying to appeal to the city council or to whoever I can in order to figure out how to stop the fight. I have a piece of property that I own that has never been subdivided. And why should I, I had a piece of property that I owned. The city made me deed it to another individual so that I could build a shop on it. And then they said, now they're saying I still have a whole list of things to be able to do, in order to build accessory buildings instead of a shop. And now I have a whole new list of things to do. And never, it's going on and on and on. So in 23, July of 23, they said if I did my property over to them, then that would make it so I could build the accessory building. Now we are a year later and I have a list of six items I have to do now instead of one. And it's just going on and on and on and I can't, I can't physically, mentally or spiritually handle it anymore. It's tearing me apart inside and out. I want it to stop. That's all I want. I just want, I don't care what we have to do to make it stop. The city is treating the property like it's been subdivided. There are no city council meetings, there are no city planning commission meetings. So in order, my understanding is it has to go through those committees in order to be subdivided. So they have no right to treat it like it's subdivided. I, I quit claimed the, my head, I had Lauren quit claiming a piece of property to me and I, and I recorded that piece of property. That's all that happened. They gave it a separate tax ID number. The city treats that tax ID number like it is a subdivision, that I guess, like property subdivided. I finally went into the city, to the planning, to the city this week and I want to thank Brandon because he has at least been trying to resolve this. Which I'm thankful of that, but the, this, the, the, we were county recorder's office said they do not have the right to, to subdivide property. And that's what they're saying what they did. That's what the city believes they did. And so I just don't know how to stop this. I just don't know how to stop it. I've been fighting with them for five years and like you say, it's just, I just can't do it anymore. So give me some options. And that's all I'm asking. Thank you.
Thank you. We are in public comment right now. If there's any public comments now, it'd be the time to make them. Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to presentations and reports. We'll begin with the mayor's report. We had our first farmer's market last night and I went by later in the evening and I was a little worried because it didn't seem too busy. And Mr. Brooks had gone by earlier in the evening and said it wasn't too busy, that the weather was a little bit breezy. Did you go? Couple of, a couple of went, okay. But in speaking to the vendors and the organizers, they said that the vendors had done fantastic. The produce person had sold three quarters of what they brought. We tried to buy several things and, and they were thrilled with the turnout, the sales. Everybody was really happy with it. And I'm shocked at how many people later in the evening and today were like, oh, I didn't know there was a farmer's market because I feel like it has been massively advertised. So I think there's potential for it to get even better, but I, I really would like to see it be successful, so we're gonna keep pushing it. And big thanks to, to Rich, Mr. Taylor, Mr. Douglas, they worked hard on coming up with an alternate layout for it and the parking was great last night. It was, it was, it worked out really well and I, I think the vendors were happy, everybody seemed really happy about us.
I'm surprised at the variety of vendors.
Yeah. Well, I'll tell you, my daughter's trying to get a booth in there and they already have one like hers and she's really mad that she cannot get hers in there. And they, I said, well, that's their deal, they manage it and they want to have a variety and there's nothing I can do about it, so. So they really try hard to have a variety, they don't want to have a bunch of the same things. Also, I have a meeting tomorrow night with Senator Milner and Representative Hall just to discuss the wrap-up of the legislative session and kind of moving forward. So if, if anybody, I'll be meeting with you a little bit tomorrow, but if anybody has any concerns or any, anything you want me to bring up with them, it's a really small, good meeting to bring things up.
Can I ask a question quick? Is this a tag team? Or, I mean, is, is, I'm sure if it's, if it, if it's those two individuals, they both represent different communities beyond Riverdale, but Rosemary shouldn't, shouldn't she be kind of somebody who's representing us also? So it's not exclusive of Riverdale?
Actually, what, you've been to it before. It's, it's the one that Senator Milner usually sets up to meet with a few people in her, in her district. And she's just going to include Representative Hall. So it is a bit of a tag team for those two, it's kind of two birds with one stone for them, I think. So it's, it's that meeting, yeah.
All right.
So, but, but we do have their ear, so if there's, if there's something that needs to be brought up, please reach out to me and give me some ideas to talk to them tomorrow. Okay. All right, and that's all I have for this meeting. Move, move on to the city administration report. Mr. Brooks?
Thank you, Mayor. Most of your department, well, all the department heads' reports are in the packet. I don't know if you have any questions for any of those that are here?
I did have one question. On, it's in the financials, the 568,000 year-to-date for the court. Right now, does that money, the revenue come back in just to support the court or is, does it come back into the general fund just in general and get dispersed?
It's unrestricted revenue, so it gets dispersed.
Okay.
Just while, while you have that, that's one of those things that we risk if we lose the justice court, that's a chunk of change right there that we're gonna lose and I think they're gonna keep trying to do it. They tried it this year, didn't pass, but they tried to get those put under state authority, which means we would lose that unless there were some kind of arrangements, but they didn't, and they didn't tell us any, any arrangements were in the works, so that would be a big hit. Beyond that, I like the sales tax report that Cody puts in there. You can, I, I love those charts because they're easy to look at and read. Again, it's kind of the same thing, you know, we're, we're not in trouble, but it's not as good as it was even a couple of years ago, so keep an eye on those as you look at those. Any other questions on any of the department heads' reports? As far as may anniversaries, I wanted to just point out one in particular. I like to give him a hard time, but when somebody's been here for 33 years, it's just amazing that somebody puts in that much time with the city and that's where Mr. Douglas, I think, has probably surpassed Lynn Forte. He didn't stay here that long, did he, Sean? Roughly close, about 33 years, and I know Sean worked under him for a long time, so he's just a huge asset for Riverdale City. And when he decides to leave, that's gonna be a hard, hard position to fill, so we appreciate Sean, he's nothing but professional and never any questions asked when we call and say, can you get this, it's done. Almost immediately, the mayor and I both see this consistently, even on weekends. It's just amazing how much work that he does through that department and the guys in there, so thanks to Sean for that much time. And our other one, I thought she'd get up and say something in public comments just because she likes to talk so much, but we do, do do the anniversary, anniversaries and Laurie Greenhog, if, those of you who have come in during the day, she's our finance person behind that does all our checks and stuff like that. Laurie is here tonight, so we wanted to recognize her, many of you don't get to see her very often, but those of us who do work with her, we love Laurie and she's just been phenomenal and we're glad to have her as part of our team, but I think the mayor, you've got a certificate for her to, to hand out, so I'll turn it over to you.
Okay.
All right, well, it is, it's an honor to present you with this. She is kind of the face you see every time you come in. She's always got a smile. One thing I realize is kind of weird is where she sits, she can see us all walking towards the door, but it's dark, we can't really see her. She probably, I guess she's gotten used to that, I'm certainly not, if you look at us, but anyway, she is a smiling face and she's just super pleasant all the time and I always give her a wave on the way in and the way back out, so grateful for all you do. She emails us a report every, is it Monday or?
Week, week.
Week, it feels like week. Anyway, so we've got a certificate for you and also a little bonus for you for sticking around for five years, so congratulations, thank you very much.
Thank you.
No, we want, we should get a picture, yeah.
Yeah. You got it? And if, before she slips out, if I could say a couple of little things just quickly there, she's a tiny little thing, but when somebody owes the city money, she is a bulldog and she will let me know about it and if we're not getting that money for her, she, she makes sure that we're, we're doing our job, but Laurie loves baseball, so it's fun to chat with her in the office and she's got a couple of big days coming up this summer. Two of her, her twin missionaries are coming home from missions, so I know she's looking forward to that, but thanks Laurie for all you do for us.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on, we did include staffing authorization in there, which you see both community services and fire still down quite a few positions and we are working on both of those. The, let's see, community development report, I don't know if we have a whole lot, well, no. Ashley obviously got done, Tesla is moving forward, I don't know, we've got a couple little hangups there. Anytime we're doing building anymore, getting transformers is like pulling teeth. And so we end up having to do a lot of behind-the-scenes kind of work that we've never had to do before. We had to do that on Shake Shack, if you all remember, we came in and got approval to do that generator and through some contacts with Utah Power, we was able to get one in. We're running into the same problem with Tesla, but theirs is even bigger. And I don't know if we've heard anything recently, but we've been working that angle. So some of these weird things that are happening nowadays are things we haven't seen in the past and it makes it really tough to get these people open on time, but we're still shooting for that, I know they're, they're concerned.
Projected date that they want to be in business?
Do you know Brandon for sure on that? I think they were shooting for this fall.
Yeah, November.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, later in the fall, but they want to get that in and make sure they're, they've, they've got it before they, they get too far on that. Same thing with Chuck E. Cheese, I know they've started the taco place, Smokey Tacos, is that what it's called? They've actually pulled a permit, we've been waiting for that one to get, to see some movement on it and that's finally going. America First continues to progress through those and then we, we got a couple of other things in fire, we're kind of excited about that. Hopefully we'll have some announcements for you in the next couple of months. These are looking good. Once it starts getting warm, we start seeing development take off again, it's been really quiet in the winter, so this is, this encouraging.
Can I ask you a question on that?
Sure.
Since we're on it, instead of waiting, is that all right?
Yeah.
Um, I saw that on the Facebook, someone posted they started working on clearing for the, over at Motor View?
Yes.
And I haven't been by there to see if it's too late, but is there a way that we could reach out from the city to see if we could get one of those Motor View signs? Just to save it in case at some point in the future we have a history area where we can display some of that stuff? I know we have a few things from the past that we've hung on to, not the big one, just like where it says Motor View.
We'll check into it, I've got to make sure Mr. Douglas lets me store that somewhere out there, I got in trouble with the movie projector with Rich.
We could reach out to Kami too, I know she's been storing a bunch of stuff at her house.
I'll, I'll put Brandon on that tomorrow and see what he can scrape up, I'm sure we could get something that they'll let us.
Senior center stores movie rep.
Yeah.
Bring it all over there.
That's what we'll do. Rich loves that projector out there, so we might as well add the Motor View to it as well while we're at it, so.
Okay.
Hey, you get a lot of comments on that, Rich. We did here when it was in this building, but let's see, I don't know if there's anything further.
I had, I had a quick question and this is kind of related to the America First Tesla area, but that roundabout is supposed to be going in to kind of get that new road open, like, do we have any, is that moving or Cozy Dell is getting bad?
Yeah, so the underground on that was a holdup, so the utilities that was in there had to be moved because of elevations, they pretty much completed all them. They called us today asking for colors on the concrete and that, so they plan to move that forward fairly quick now, so.
That'll be good. Sorry.
And while you're talking about that, the other roundabouts getting awfully close too, I think we can get some movement on that one down there and get both of those that are outstanding right now, hopefully done this summer. They've been sitting there for a while, so. Any other questions on anything else we've got? Like I said, we'll have good news here in a couple of months, maybe even a month, so some, some good things happening.
Has America First moved into that building yet? That first building?
I don't believe they have, not yet. All right, and that's all I have.
Okay. We will now move on to consent items. Number one, consideration to approve the meeting minutes from the May 7th, 2024 council work session and council meeting. Are there any corrections or changes to those minutes? Seeing none, a motion to approve would be in order.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that motion? All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? Okay, that passes unanimously, thank you. We will now move on to action item number one, consideration of resolution 2024-11, awarding a bid to Alta Excavation for the 2024 Stormwater Improvement Projects in an amount not to exceed $229,000. Mr. Douglas?
Thank you, Mayor. So this is a line, the main line on this is the line that goes through the Golden Spike Parking Lot that comes off the hill over there. So it'll be taken out about five to seven feet through the parking lot and replaced the line from, we laid a new line down the hill approximately two years ago. This will go from that new line over to a box on the edge of the parking lot. The other thing that's on this project is up on 1150, there's some old-style dip stones where when you're coming down the hill, there's not really storm grates until you get down in and so people can actually come down into them and drop into them. We're gonna take those out and level them up and put storm grates on there just to make that corner on the intersections safe on two of the blocks up there, so that's the other part of the project. I've not worked with this excavator before, but the engineers talked with other people that have and it seems like they do a fairly good job, so we look forward to working with them.
Any questions?
Is that the, is that the same parking lot that we just redid?
No. And I, I would comment on that, I guess, since it's brought up. So what happened on that is he sent his paint crew out because we was painting the lines in this one that we're going to work on because we're not really gonna disturb the lines much. He sent him out to paint the lines on that. Well, apparently he had a little extra time at the end of the day, so he thought, well, I know I gotta paint the other ones, so I'll just jump on it, not realizing that he needed to wait for him to do the slurry the next day. So he was not very happy with his paint guy because he paid to paint it twice, but things happen and he couldn't push the back button on the computer to erase it, it was out there permanent, so he had to go, go over them, but that's what happened on that.
We are grateful for them for being so responsive about that.
They was, they was ashamed, actually, like they felt really bad that it happened and that it blew up on Facebook and put a kind of a black eye on the city for a minute. He's apologized numerous times, but.
Yeah.
This guy just got a little carried away, so.
Trying to be efficient, you know? Can't blame him for that. Any other comments? Counsel Arnold?
Move to approve resolution 2024-11, awarding a bid to Alta Excavation for the 2024 Stormwater Improvement Projects in the amount not to exceed $229,000.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion on that motion? Ms. Maragoni, will you please poll the council?
Counsel Stevens?
Yes.
Counsel Hanson? Yes. Counsel Halls?
Yes.
Counsel Arnold?
Yes.
Counsel Richter?
Yes.
All right, that passes unanimously, thank you. We'll move on to item, item number two, consideration of resolution 2024-12, awarding a bid to Post Asphalt for the 2024 5050 South Overlay Project in an amount not to exceed $236,031.95, Mr. Douglas?
Thank you, Mayor. So this will be going from 1150 West to the parking lot at Golden Spike. It'll be a total overlay with the fabric and then we're also doing a large percentage of the curb and gutter on the north side of the road. A lot of the south side's already been done, but it's just in such poor shape, we're gonna do a larger, larger percentage than what we normally do, so I think there'll be some very happy residents over there with the curb and gutter being replaced and the road. We did the water line a few years ago, did the sewer a few years before that, so it's just a good time to get a new surface on that, so. And we have worked with Post a lot and he's one of our preferred contractors, so we're happy that he was a little bitter.
Questions on that one? Counsel Arnold?
To approve resolution 2024-12, awarding a bid to Post Asphalt for the 2024 5050 South Overlay Project in the amount not to exceed $236,031.95.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion on that? Ms. Maragoni, will you please poll the council?
Counsel Richter?
Yes.
Counsel Halls?
Yes.
Counsel Hanson? Yes. Counsel Stevens?
Yes.
Counsel Arnold?
Yes.
All right, that passes unanimously, thank you. We'll move on to item number three, consideration of resolution 2024-13, approving employee health insurance benefits amendment. Mr. Carton?
I'll, I'll start this off before we bring Cody up, just, this is the same proposal that we brought into you about a month ago, requesting that the council consider. One of the things we've seen, it's not so much pay that we're running into as much anymore as some of the benefits when we were looking at the position that Brandon, Brandon ended up getting. We got a lot more inquiries this time about benefits than we did finances, which was kind of interesting. We're seeing it more and more and more, I think, as the, the market tightens, that's some of the things that they're looking at. So as, as we've approached some of these things, we're looking for ways that we can come up with some perks for our employees that just doesn't absolutely kill the city and not that this one's not gonna cost us a little bit of money because it will, but it was one of those that we thought, well, this is maybe something we could do and a lot of the cities that we've reached out to and checked with recently are in this same ballpark where they're doing a 90-10 split rather than the 80-20 that the city's at now. So again, we're requesting that the city council consider this as a benefit to our employees to shift from the 80-20 to the 90-10. Having said all that, Cody has re-crunched some numbers in light of what, what we even did our last meeting, so if you guys want to hear that updated information, that might be good to, to turn some time over to him so he can kind of explain where we're at financially on that, if you're okay with that, Mayor.
Yeah, please.
So just with the changes that you made with the URS, the Tier Two contribution, if you remember, we pulled that down a little bit so that over the, what we had originally estimated it saved about 23,000. So when I made these changes, the budget impacted the budget about 57,000, 58,000 between all the funds as a whole and then a little more of it was in the general fund, so it was about 60,000 impact in the general fund. So I don't know if you have any more questions for me?
Is that a, yeah, sorry, is that a, can you do 85-15?
We, we can, I mean, we can do whatever you want. Just at some point, you know, like, is it worth doing it if we don't do like some, you know, like more, I don't know. Yeah, we could split the difference, it's up to you guys.
Any other questions?
We have, Stacy has told the employees that tentatively you're looking at the 90-10 and so she has sent an email to everybody as they were considering open enrollment that we're at the 80-10 or the 80-20 and that you guys were considering the 90-10. So some people may have already looked at that as their decision Friday. So that's why she felt like we needed to do something tonight if you were going to so that people, because they can really go back in and still change their decision through Friday, so.
Okay. Any other questions, Counsel Arnold?
I thought you were really happy with Brandon.
We are happy with Brandon.
But you got him with the 80-20, I mean.
We had to beg and plead and steal on that one though, so.
Counsel Arnold?
Move to approve resolution 2024-13, approving the employee health insurance benefits amendment as stated within the packet.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion on that motion? Ms. Maragoni, will you please poll the council?
Counsel Hanson? Yes. Counsel Richter?
Yes.
Counsel Stevens?
Yes.
Counsel Arnold?
Yes.
Counsel Halls?
Yes.
All right. That passes unanimously, very good.
Brandon, you better stay.
He just bought a new truck, he has no choice now, so. And he got it at Tony DeVino, so that's even better, we got sales tax off of it.
Thank you. That is awesome. Thank you to the council for approving that. Okay, number four, review and contract. Let's see, review of contract and consideration of resolution 2024-14, approving a contract between Riverdale City and Weber Human Services regarding senior center services. Mr. Taylor.
Good evening, Council. Several months ago, we approached Weber Human Services and just tried to discuss with them some options and ask some questions about what funding might be available and why we haven't been receiving funding. And it's been quite a dialogue and quite a conversation, which has led us to this point. They've, they've reevaluated kind of what they're doing and decided to consolidate some of their efforts. They've been funding a bunch of different cities and kind of had a different agreement with every single city that they were working with, and we were not one of them. But they have initially sent over this contract for us to look at, offering us $59,000 for this upcoming budget year. It's a one-year agreement. We have not had a chance to work out the details and to clarify a few, a little bit of the language that's in there. So it's a work in progress, but it's, it's a lot further along the way on the road than we've been. They've asked us to respond or to have a signed contract by the beginning of June. And we're bringing you guys this contract tonight, recognizing that it's not across the finish line. It's not ready to sign, but it's kind of an agreement in concept. We really don't have a ton of concerns. Rather, we just need some clarification. Maybe those concerns will arise as we get the clarification. But as of now, I think we've kind of have a good framework in, in place. And as this resolution is written, I believe, we're asking you guys to, to allow the mayor to kind of approve that final contract with this general framework in place. Just wanted to know if you guys had any questions.
Counsel Hoss?
I noticed that within it, it requires the city to have certain insurance. And I imagine that those limits are what we have.
Yeah, we're, we're fine on all those things. The only things we wouldn't agree to is something that is a bigger burden than what they have stated here. If that was the case, we'd have to bring it back to you. But just a little clarification. But yeah, you're correct. We were covered on all that stuff. We don't see any, the way we're operating now is, is in compliance with it. So.
Counsel Arnold.
Move to approve the contract and, or resolution 2024-14 as stated within the packet.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
A motion and a second. Any discussion?
I have discussions. Sorry, I should've spoke up sooner. On the resolution, it refers to DHS and the third whereas, and I think it's supposed to mean WHS. And we probably need to add WHS up in the caption so that, because that's the first reference to it, just to make sure it's clear that it's Weber Human Services rather than the department. That was really the only fix on the resolution. The only thing on the contract, I know it's still kind of in draft, but just for you to think about is it mentions the building, but it doesn't mention that it's held by the city through the RDA. And so that's.
Okay, just that clarification. No, that's probably a good point.
It's not a huge change, but just to be clear.
We can add that in there.
But that was the only change on the resolution that I saw, to add the WHS and then fix the DHS.
Yeah, we're fine with that if the motions, okay.
And the second?
And the second.
Motion and second, accept. Okay. Very good. Thank you. Ms. Marigoni, will you please poll the council?
Counsel Richter?
Yes.
Counsel Hoss?
Yes.
Counsel Arnold?
Yes.
Counsel Hanson?
Yes.
Counsel Stevens?
Yes.
Very good. Okay.
Thank you.
That passes unanimously. Thank you.
Approval of money coming in and some money coming out.
That's why we, that's why we did it. We're bringing in all kinds of money. Hopefully it'll get even higher or not before we're done. So that's all I did.
To get some of that money.
I always say, what's the catch? And, and I'm not seeing the cat, you know, that's why I'm skeptical. Now, I, I trust you and I can see the time sensitive nature of, hey, let's just turn it over and get it wrapped up. But it's almost too good and which makes me suspicious.
Well, they've been paying out to these other cities for quite some time in smaller amounts of stuff. And where they've just consolidated this, you know, if we took Miranda, for instance, that is our, our main employee out there, it doesn't pay her full salary, but it certainly helps. I mean, this is a huge bonus. And so these are the kind of things we've been looking at. If we can find ways to help pay for some of those costs out there, it, it extends the life of that thing. So that's, that's where we, when we first approached them, that was our goal. And so far, we've been able to accomplish that, at least partially. So it's a good sign.
And those are good points. As we've been in many meetings with the other officials from other cities, we go into the meetings and we can't lose. I mean, because we're getting nothing. And the other cities are very tense about it. And some of them are pretty frustrated because they're looking at losing money where we had nothing to lose. We just, I mean, they could have given us half that amount. We would have been thrilled. I, I can see why you're, why you're worried, why you're concerned.
There's a catch and I just, I'm not seeing it. And you know, there's some, there's some ambiguous language that, okay, what's good, anyway.
Yeah, Rich can mic up.
That's a really good point, Counsel Stevens, as far as a catch, just to maybe address it a little bit. Weber Human Services has been getting a lot of pressure from some of the cities that they've been funding, as well as from us, where, where we haven't been getting funded. And they can't spread their money any thinner than it's been. They've been operating several senior centers and some of these senior centers don't hardly have any participation. And when, I think one of the big things is it came to light that the funding is not based on any kind of metric and it's not equitable at all. It's just a deal that I made with somebody in the back room. And when that came to light, it kind of put Weber Human Services in an awkward position because they can't justify what they're doing and how they're doing it. And so as they're looking at the funding that they currently have and how best to use it, they decided that the best way to use it would be to consolidate services. And as they're consolidating and looking around, it just so happens that our building and our services and our facility is, is one of the best in the county, if not the best in the county. And so it became attractive to them because they can service more people than they can in some of these smaller centers more efficiently, right? And, and so I think that's maybe explains some of the, I don't understand how this is going. There's, there's a little bit of background to it. We're a little bit nervous. We've, we've always been doing it on our own. And, and you know, anytime you enter into a partnership, there are strings attached and, and some of those clarifications need to be made. We don't want to operate, but we don't want to interrupt the services that we're providing currently. And we don't feel that, that the understanding, we need to clarify some of the language, but we don't feel like the understanding would do that at all. Moving forward, this is just a one-year contract. They mentioned to us that they're interested in a longer term agreement. And I think that is a little bit more complicated. It would be a little higher dollar value, but they would come with some decisions and some discussion that we would need to have. And, and my intention is if we enter into this agreement for this budget year, it gives us an opportunity to kind of see how that partnership works. And it gives us some time to work out the details into the future. But, but quite frankly, some of the centers that they've been putting their money into couldn't hold the capacity that we can. And so if they're consolidating, they couldn't put their money into those centers. And as it stands, the ones that they're giving money to this next budget year, every single one of them, it represents an increase in money to that city. Now they're taking money out of other cities, but the cities that they're trying to work with, every single one of them is in the position that Mayor just described. Hey, we're getting more money than we got last year. And so they're also asking the cities to, to kind of take the responsibility for the services, which is something that we've historically done, right? Some of these other cities, it's a little different for them. So I don't know if that background helps, but, but that kind of helps me understand where they're coming from.
Counsel Richter, is this common with the other cities, a one-year agreement for this year and, and the funds here? Is it equally distributed between these, what, four or five different?
So my understanding is there's five different cities that are all under this $59,000 agreement. So it's equally distributed between the five cities. My understanding is, is that it's North Ogden, Ogden, and then Riverdale. So they want a north, a central and a south. But in the south, they actually are giving three cities the money this year. They'll continue to give Roy City the money and the Washington Terrace the money. And the intention is next year to, out of those three cities, to just choose one city to operate in the south. And at that point, they would take the same amount of money and divide it three ways instead of five. And so there hasn't been anything ironclad worked out that way. But there's been discussion about it and we feel that we would be in pretty good shape for, to be chosen as one of the three. Again, we have a lot of work to do, a lot of details to work out. So.
I was gonna say, is there any recommendation that you're going to have for us to help you with that process?
Yeah, I don't know how that process is going to look. It's really probably a little preliminary to speak about now because we don't know what they're going to ask for and require. As, as mentioned, the, the lunch is not any part of this agreement. There was a little bit of language in that contract that mentioned something about lunches. Again, that's some of the clarification and we want that taken out. They've told us that this is not part of that agreement. Moving forward, I don't know where they're at with that. And obviously that would be a decision that we make as a city. You know, the, there's, there's a lot to think about there. And I think there's discussions that need to be had. And so when appropriate, we'll involve the council in that. But at this point, we don't really have anything to bring to you because they haven't approached us quite yet.
And it's not really on the agenda, so we can't discuss it tonight anyway. So.
I just, six months from now, I mean, I'll be looking at these packets to see if it increases, it's like six months, if it increases our participation. I mean, that to me is, is something to, to follow.
Yeah, for sure. Potentially with the other ones closing, for sure. Thanks, guys.
Thanks, Rich. Okay, we'll move on to item number five now, discussion of possible action regarding the recycling program. Mr. Brooks.
As I mentioned in our pre-planning meeting, this, this issue comes up on occasions. By way of background for some of you who are newer members, a few years ago, when we implemented the recycling program, there was a window of time that people were able to opt out of it. At that point, it became mandatory and that policy has remained in place since then. On occasions, we get some people that come in that have some pretty good stories that they, they would request the opportunity to opt out of it. And our response has always been, no, that's the policy that's been set by the council. In light of that, it's come up again recently and the mayor said, well, it might be a good discussion item. Let's put it on council for discussion. And so that's why we put it on here. I did ask Mr. Douglas to be here tonight because he's the one that's most versed in this from the city's perspective. And if we could give him a little bit of a time to, to, you know, make his presentation and his argument, then you can open that up for questions to him, if that's okay, Mayor.
Yes. So I did a little bit of research on this as far as mandatory programs and non-mandatory. And recently Davis County has just required, they're setting a requirement that every city in Davis County will be required to have recycling. And they put out some numbers, which was interesting, that last year Farmington City, which has mandatory recycling at this time, they have 96% usage. Leighton City has a voluntary, voluntary program. They only have a 30% participation in their program. So I think that kind of shows you that, you know, if you don't, if, if we don't kind of keep something mandatory, our participation is probably going to go way down, I would assume. The other thing that's going to affect us is if we start letting people opt out, it's going to increase the cost to the other residents because we're going to have the same truck out driving the same routes and spending pretty much the same amount of time, but we're not going to be having the same revenue coming in. So it's going to have a cost increase, I would assume for most people. I really think if we're going to do a recycling program, we should be all in. I, I don't think we get enough complaints or a few people every year. And we have residents that use some services that don't use others. It kind of depends on where you're at. I think it's a good program. I think we're just going to keep filling up landfills and the tonnage to dump our normal refuge is going to keep going up. This helps us keep that down. And I think in the future, the counties are going to have more trouble getting rid of it. And we'll probably see more mandatory requirements for it. I know some of the discussion on that was brought up in the original motion. I think Alan was on there at that time. I can't remember who else was all on there, but that was one of the things like, you know, if it's the right thing to do, let's get it in and get it rolling. It seems to work really well. They're building, recycled earth is really going to ramp up out here west of us and have a better program for recycling, which is where ours should end up going again, once that's up and running again. I don't know. I guess, you know, it's, it's a, it's your decision on what you want to do. I recommend that we keep it the way we are. The one thing we could look at doing that would maybe make it not have an issue come up once in a while is we don't have to have it split. I mean, I'd have to look into it and see if we could even do it on billing, but maybe we don't have a recycle fee and a garbage fee. It's just one, it's a refuge fee. And it covers both so that they're not a split title in there. Some cities do that where you just pay one fee and it covers both of them, you know, and they, they title it whatever you want to title that. And then it don't encourage people to try and opt out of one or the other. But we've really, if you look at our numbers, we really haven't changed the price much. I think we started at 20, in 2011, we started at $2.45 on recycling. And we're at 385 now, you know, 13 years later. So we've kept that cost really low. Our garbage fund, we don't try and make a revenue in there. Like it's, it barely balances itself. There's really no profit in that for the city. So.
So we do get revenue from recycling?
We don't get revenue. I'm saying we, we've charged just enough to cover what we have to pay.
Okay, okay.
But we don't, we don't pay as much to, we don't pay as much to dump that as we do the tonnage on the, on the regular garbage.
So we would see an increase in our regular tipping fees and.
Because we're going to pay for more tonnage.
Because we'd have more tonnage going into.
There is some cities that if you don't participate in the, in the recycle program, they charge you more for your regular garbage can too. But that's kind of a billing nightmare trying to sort all that out. I, I wouldn't recommend we go there.
Okay. Thanks for the clarification. Questions? Counsel Hanson.
If, even though they are still paying for it, like if maybe someone can't drag two cans out or doesn't have a place for it, can they have the can picked up?
The can, we've always offered that. We've always said, you know, you're opting into the fee. But if you flat out are not going to use the service and you don't want to store it at your house, we will come and pick up the can. We don't require them to keep the can at their house. They just can't opt out of the fee for the program. But it's not like that we're requiring them to keep that on site. You know, we'll, we'll gladly pick that up. That's the other problem. If we start letting people opt out, what do we do with all these used garbage cans? I mean, where are we, if we have hundreds of peoples now, oh, I don't want to play anymore. What am I going to do with them?
Counsel Hoss? Do we know, do you know how many opt outs there are currently?
I do not know how many is left. I didn't really have a whole lot of time to do a ton of research on that on our backend. I would say it's dwindling because you know, every time somebody moves out or whatever, them opt out ones have went away. So I would say it's less than what we originally started with for sure. But I don't have an exact number on the opt outs.
The other question is on the, on what is recycled, what can be put in, or what should be put in the cans? It's really, I, I was a little surprised at how little there is on the list now. I thought at one time that there, the list was bigger.
So that's a constantly changing market. So we take stuff out, we put stuff in. The problem is, is if they don't have a place that they can sell that, they don't recycle it. Like if they cannot move the product, they don't have anywhere to store it. And so as them markets change and fluctuate, sometimes they'll put something out, sometimes they'll put it back in. I, I'm hoping that with the new deal coming online out here, they'll be able to sort some stuff better and maybe take some more stuff. Because a lot of it comes down to a sorting issue. And can you sort it? And do you have a market for it? And so hopefully with the millions are putting into this new facility out here, maybe the sorting will be a little better and they'll take some more. You still should be able to get about 30%. From the numbers I've seen, you should be able to get about 30% of your refuge into recycle at the minimum, if you try.
Yeah. I, I guess the other thing is just keeping up with the, the list. I mean, that, that was, it, the question was asked on the citizens page. And I went out and looked and I was surprised. It was less than what I thought it was. And things that I thought that I had remembered were able to be put in were no longer on the list. And I don't know how long I've been continuing to put those in. So, you know, that's one of those things where, you know, I don't know how, again, how we publicize, how we can keep that publicized. It's just like the, you know, just like the farmer's market. I thought that, I as well thought that it was well-publicized. And there were still a lot of people who just didn't know. It's the same type of thing. It's just a, a communication issue and.
We try and make sure it stays pretty updated on the website. And we would publicize more like if we made a change like tomorrow. We would try and make sure that hit all the social media stuff, you know, one way or the other. But as far as, usually we don't make a big change unless we update the list.
Counsel Stevens.
Couple thoughts. I hate being told what to do. And when you, so you're talking about Davis County and probably the Davis County Commission. As, as I understood what you're saying, kind of said, okay, everybody in Davis County. As, as I understood what you're saying, kind of said, okay, everybody in Davis County has to be on this. Okay. Has, has that been a topic at all at Weber County?
Not that I'm aware of yet.
That I haven't seen or heard. Okay, good.
Background on Davis County is their landfill was filling up too fast. Like they had a projected date on when it should fill up. And with the growth and everything, it was filling way faster. And when they start looking for new places to get rid of it, the cost is way higher than at their own landfill. So their whole reason be to, behind the recycling is it slows down filling the landfills up. There's just no two ways around it. It's being, it's not being taken there, it's not filling up the site. So to get the longevity out of the landfill, they needed people to recycle and keep it out of the landfill stream.
Okay, which brings me to a second thought. Is I've lived in other communities and I know like Roy has three cans, the, the green, the recycle and the refuse. During the summer, I can fill up my can on clippings and whatnot. Are we considering that? Is, or is that even in the, you know? Not that we need to?
We haven't considered that. Um, and it used to be a bigger deal. A lot of people used to didn't mulch their lawns as much as they did now. So we was having a lot of lawn clippings in cans. We're not seeing that as much now, I don't think. I mean, I know there is still people that are bagging. But we haven't even approached that program. There is some cities that do that. And some of them actually have their own green waste facility that they have their own dump to take it to. And so to them, it's more cost effective. Like we would have to pay to take it somewhere because we don't have a green waste facility. So it would be, you know, we would have diff, a different cost. And then you would be looking at how, are you going to make people opt into that and keep that, have enough people to actually run the program?
Councilor Arnold?
If you looked in the packet, um, one of the things that I said back in 2011 was that the, our landfill was supposed to last 50 years. It lasted 29. And we've just had growth since then. One of the questions I do have is in the, in the documentation in the packet, it says, residents shall have the right to opt out of the curbside garbage recycling program. It's, it's in there that they can opt out? Is that current?
It's not.
That was their original?
That was the original one.
Okay.
So that was back when you did that. You had a time period in there where you, when you originally set the program, they had a time period where they could opt out. If they did not opt out during that time, then after that time, everybody that joined the service was required to be in.
I saw that. Yeah, I was just thinking if that's in there, we already have it in there.
No.
But the, the thing that's important, if you want to talk about people telling you what to do, the sewer board and the transfer station have us buy the short hairs, the whatever you want to have us buy. It's, this is the only thing we're doing to, to have some sort of manipulation on that. Because when they raise their tipping fees, they don't come and ask us. You know, they just say, this is what it is. They go to Robinson. Robinson says, this is what tipping fees are, this is what our fuel charges are, this is my price. They've been really good to us. The transfer station really has not. And they've, they've looked at that stuff. So I mean, this is, this is kind of a, a program to keep us from, you know, having the world handed to us in our garbage program. So I, I think it's very important that we keep everybody in it. Also, community, I mean, the way my Amazon boxes are coming to us, to us, you know? I mean, I, I fill up on Amazon boxes and stuff there. So I mean, I, I think it would be foolish to allow anybody to opt out. This, this is one of the things in order to keep this price down. That we do it for the community. I think it's super important.
Councilor Richard?
Yeah, you'll have to forgive me here. I don't have the history on this because I looked through these notes and everything. There, there was a lot of this discussion and I didn't see where, where it changed. So somewhere subsequent to this meeting, there was a change that it was mandatory and there was no opt out. Is that what I understand?
It might have been one after that, but I do know that it was done. I know that we did.
Yeah, the eighth month trial period.
Thirty day.
Thirty days of the announcement and one after an eighth month trial period. So you're saying that was just a one?
So they had them two, two windows there. So they could call in before we delivered the cans and we wouldn't deliver them a can. And then if I remember correctly, they had that trial period where they could try the service. And then if they didn't want to, they could do it, get out. And then after that, everything was mandatory if they hadn't.
Eight months they have to stay in.
If I remember correctly, I know that that's the way I remember it.
But if there's somewhere along the line that we took that out, I don't remember addressing that, but we need to look at it because we really shouldn't have an opt out. I think, um, there's a paragraph in there in 2011 where I said that I support the no option, no op, let's see, no opt out option except for cause. I don't know what that cause would be. I mean, if you're talking, I mean, financial hardship, age, something like that, you're, you're talking 3.85. And that, for what our, you know, water sewer garbage fee is, that's such a small portion of it. And it's really a big deal when the tipping fees at the, people don't realize if they just use their black can for that kind of stuff, they're increasing our tipping fees because of the amount of tonnage that we send through. And, you know, they're really hurting our community by throwing those few items that are on the list in the black cans. I mean, it's, we want, we want to keep that down as much as we can because Robinson passes that kind of stuff on to us.
You look at some of the cities around us, so Roy's recycling, 754, South Ogden's 409, Harrisville's seven, Pleasant View's seven, Far West is six. Some of the other ones, it wasn't as easy to get and some of them are combined. So like the terraces combined. Ogden City says theirs is free, but they charge you 24.71 for your first black can, so. Ogden, but they say the recycle's free, so.
What's the cost of our first black can now?
Our first one's 12.98.
Can we say that too?
So, yeah, there's, and then like Roy City, they charge extra. So if you don't do recycle, then they charge you extra on your black month, monthly can, so. We try, I mean, honestly, that, that fund, we keep it as low as we possibly can. We have a little bit of money in there to buy cans with and some operating expenses, but it's pretty much the cost that the service costs us to run.
You know, for years, they had a couple of big garbage cans over in the park, lower parking lot of Riverdale Elementary. And you could put cardboard in there that was recycled and would help fund PTA of the school. But it was trashy and it was not dumped often enough. But for years, I have a pile and I took obediently, broke all my boxes down, put them in this pile in the garage and from time to time, a couple of weeks, take it over there to the, the school just because I support recycling, I support the school. Now, I, I think they took it out, oh, what, six months ago, those garbage cans. They were a nice whore. But, you know, so now I have to use the, uh, the blue can. And so it's like, eh, okay. And, you know, and I find somebody else has a, has a, hey, donate to us so that we can raise money, like we used to do with the Scouts. We collected up, this was years ago, for recycling. I'll do that and rather than send it down in the, but, you know, I don't know if it helps or hurts, but I recycle. But it just doesn't mean I use, have, want to use or the blue can is my first choice.
So I'm not getting a feeling that anyone really wants to take any action on this tonight.
Well, I'm, I'm just confused on whether this is a financial question, the 3.85, which is not much? Or is this a social responsibility issue? Or maybe it's a little bit of both. But, but yeah, there's some point, I think we have a barrier as a council, you know, is where we start. You know, if it's a financial issue for the city and it's something we need to look at, then that makes sense to me. If, if we're trying to mandate some social morality or something like that, it, it gets a little gray for me.
Okay.
I just think if you're going to run a program, it's hard to start changing the rules midstream where we're into it this deep. We purchased the cans. We have them out there. We have the program set up. And, and running cans back and forth and trying to store cans and.
I get it.
And if, if you get feedback from your residents, you know, your neighbors, your friends, we can certainly bring it back on. Um, it was something that was brought up a little bit and, uh, you know, we said, well, we'll talk to the council about it and.
I doubt we get, in my opinion, we probably don't get six a year.
Yeah.
Requests, so it's very, pretty low.
Also, anytime you get a resident that's talking about this and you start talking about the black can and how much it costs for the tipping fees and all that kind of stuff, pay attention to the transfer station. I mean, we're having, it's, it's a horrible one. It's as, it's as bad as the sewer board. Sewer board's just like, here's your increase. And we go. Okay, I mean, it just passes through and we don't make any money on it. That's pretty much what the garbage group is too.
And it is good to be well-educated about the tipping fees and how the, the blue can affects the black can. You know what I mean? That is, that's really good to be educated about that. And I mean, Mr. Douglas could, could really fill you in on how those affect each other if you feel like you need more information, so. Okay. Councilor Hawes?
Can we get a copy of the, um, final resolution 2011-8?
Final copy, yeah.
Well.
Or can I?
And, and to double check it to make sure that, that is the final resolution if.
Yeah, because the, the motion in the minutes indicated that it was mo, that it was modified. And, but we don't see what it was modified to. And that's always one of my points of controversy. That, you know, we made, we make a modification to it, but we don't see what the actual language ends up being.
Yeah, that's not a problem. I just, I didn't provide you any more than that. I, quite frankly, I thought that was the final one, but it doesn't matter. I mean, I didn't know where you were going to go tonight, so I didn't prepare a resolution for this if you decided to take action. Because there could have been so many directions you could have gone. I was, I didn't have a crystal ball for that, but yeah, we'll get it for you.
You know, I just have a hypothetical as I'm, I've lived in my house for 30 years. We raised five kids. Two garbage, two black cans was not enough. And that's when the recycling came in, hey, we could, you know, disperse that a little bit more. And now we have no kids at home. We barely use half, half of the black can. And half the time I don't even put it out because it, we just don't, and so it's like, okay. And, and most of my neighbors are the same way. I'm going, why do we have two cans? All right, so hypothetically, if, if us near empty nesters or empty nesters got rid of that can, which we're paying for two cans, then that would do what you're talking about would. So everybody who now has a black can won. I mean, because by paying more that, and, and not provide, not, we're not causing the tipping scales to tip any higher. So if we did a whole bunch of people turned in their second black can and because they're not using it, that will then do what you're saying with, you know, it'll spread the cost around for actually the people who are using two cans. And, and so anyway, that's just a hypothetical thought processes that can cause the, the black can cost to go up without even raising the, uh, without having more on the tipping.
Yes. Thank you to those that have two cans and don't use them and pay for them each month. That's, I fall into that a lot of the year now, but there are a couple of weeks. So I'll keep mine for now.
Just, just one quick note that back when the reli, recycling thing came in in 2011, Sean was the acting Public Works Director.
That is correct.
Reading that stuff, that's what he said.
Yeah. Mr. Hanson threw me into the fire on that one because that was a controversial one and it was.
Yeah.
I thanked him for it the other day, actually, so.
Very good. Well, thank you, Mr. Douglas. That was a good discussion, thank you. We'll now move on to the comments section of our meeting. Uh, we'll start with city council. Any comments for this meeting? Councilor Hanson?
I won't post it on Facebook, but it's National Public Works Week.
Thank you for not posting them. Don't like attention, so thank you. Casey?
I'll just make a quick comment for the Hicks family that's here. We're not going to talk about the group home that's up by your house in the council meeting, but I'm going to make an appointment with Mr. Brooks to just kind of get some particulars. And just, and just so you know, the, the state really protects those types of homes. You've probably done your research. So, I mean, we can squawk a little bit, make sure that the, the Ts are crossed and the Is are dotted. But other than that, there's really not a lot that we can do. We've had experience with kind of a halfway house, wasn't it? Up on the Washington Terrace side of Riverdale?
Yeah, we got sued on that one.
And they basically just told us to shut up. So, I mean, that's kind of what we're dealing with with that.
Councilor Hawes?
Can we get an update on the barn?
Uh, Chief Shally's here.
I drove past it twice today. It seems like it's burned down substantially. Very little smoke's coming out of it. The field's all extinguished. It's not smoking at all. There's just no way to put out a hay bale fire without really letting it burn down. If we would have dumped a lot of water, water on it, one, it would have been irresponsible for us to dump thousands of gallons of water on it and then not put it out. And it would postpone the fire even longer because it just would have continued to smolder. So it burned itself down pretty rapidly. It's kind of surprising how quick it did burn down. It was a 20-foot pile. And if you look at it today, it's a five-foot pile. So it's, it's doing its job. Hopefully that smoke now won't be as a nuisance as it has been.
Thanks to you and your guys for.
Guys worked hard.
Yeah.
A lot of work that day and the days after, so.
Yeah, several trips.
They worked very hard on it.
Yeah.
All of our surrounding fire departments who came to support us too.
Oh, that's good to know. I didn't know that, so.
We had a lot of support.
Good.
Alex Patterson's finger is probably going to work. It was smashed when they were trying to pull equipment out of the barn and middle finger on his left hand and he had like 11 pins put in it. It's a nasty looking thing.
Probably the greatest lesson we learned through this, at least the fire department did, not the whole fire department, but the fire chief is what you step in and what you don't step in when you're out by a barn. It's probably about 30 inches of cow manure that he thought was hard and it wasn't. And he found out really fast. And I saw him practically swimming over there. It was pretty entertaining, to be honest with you, but. He was dumping it out of his boots by the time he got done, so.
Last time that happened to the police, it cost us quite a bit of money to repair or to, I think the fire department too. Didn't you guys have to get new uniforms and stuff? When the, when the rollover? Get new shoes.
Tip waiters.
Okay. Any other comments from the council? Okay. Any comments from the city staff?
Couple of quick ones. I, I made a copy of this. I should have presented you all your own copy there. But this is our notice for our last drug court graduation. And I highlighted that, that Joan put our very last. So she's getting excited that we're moving on. But just for your calendars, if you choose to come to this, it's on June 27th at 1 o'clock. So that will be our last final ceremony that we hold here. Now, I did speak with her today. We found out a couple of interesting. One thing is we've been in non-compliance for quite some time now. Under state rules, we have to have a minimum of 15 participants. And I don't think, I can't even remember the last time we had 15. So we've been out of compliance for a while, so it's probably a good thing that we're passing this on. In addition to that, they just found out that they're getting a fairly hefty grant from the AOC. I don't think they even know how much, but pretty nice when they, they had some money there that nobody applied for. And it was a perfect fit for their program, the new one that they're going to start down in Weber County. So that is in the works and it's going. And, and all of our participants are going to transfer over, so they're not going to miss anything. They'll have a new judge, which is going to be somewhat impacting on them. But Judge Mema, who we had here for some time, uh, he'll be really good at that. So I don't think they're going to skip a beat. But if you get a chance to come to that, be nice because that's going to be our last one. In addition to the farmer's market, just a couple of comments after seeing that last night. Everything we planned on so far this year has revolved about, around the one last fall. And if you remember, that one was packed, if you've made it down to that. So one of the biggest concerns, and I just bring this up more as an FYI to the council here. We were concerned about the parking down. First of all, we were concerned about the layout. There were some hiccups with that last night, but that's been resolved. Rich has already jumped on top of that. But two things I did want to mention. Um, but two things I did want to mention, um, that we didn't present to the council, but when we had discussed this, our thoughts were to close that large pavilion just simply because of the parking. We don't have the parking down there to handle everything. So we have cut off reservations for that, just so you know, from about, I don't know if we're going from four or five on those Monday nights until close. There were a, a pretty large group there last night, but they came in on their own. It's not like we're going to police it and kick people out if they come in there, but we're not going to specifically reserve it for anybody. And then the other thing too, is we're going to shut that splash pad down a little bit earlier on Monday nights to just alleviate, because our parking's just not able to handle enough of them. But I just wanted to tell you that if you show up and you don't see the splash pad on, that's why. So unless you had questions on that, I'd cleared that with the mayor. Under our code, the mayor actually has the discretion to change the hours on the park. So I'd cleared that with him and that's our plan at this point. We, we didn't do it last night. One, the splash pad's not off. That'll open, uh, Saturday. Is that what you said, Sean? But from here on out, on Monday nights, we'll probably shut that down about four o'clock. So those people have time to clear out by the time that the farmer's market people come in. So hopefully all that will help it transition a lot smoother than, than we did last night. So. But I think for the most part it went well. Crowds weren't huge, but it was cold. I put a coat on, wind was blowing and it was a little bit chilly when I was there. So. But, uh, like the mayor said, I think they were happy and there was a good variety. I was really surprised by that. So. That's all I had, Mayor.
Okay.
Oh, in the city code, it says, we shall provide each resident with a recycle and a garbage container is what the city code says.
Mayor. Um, I, I already emailed you guys all the ordinance where it changed and they took out all of the opt-out. So it's in your email.
Okay. Thank you.
In two thousand and twelve.
Okay, very good.
So the, uh, I'm a little confused because what they repealed doesn't seem to be what they, what the resolution that they passed in two thousand and eleven says.
We'll, we'll take a look at it. Stacy, I don't know that we can save it tonight. I'll take a look at it tomorrow. We'll, we'll get it figured out.
We need to get something back in here. We can.
Yeah.
Like a thing. Okay. Any other comments from the staff? Um, let's see. So we have that, uh, fundraiser coming up. I think it's, it's June seventh, I believe. Uh, Jim Knight just texted me and said, hey, please share with the council that, that they have paid the registration fee for that or the activity fee for that. Um, so as far as I know, that's going to happen. Um, I'm going to be out of town. Uh, Counselor Arnold, can you handle that? That'll be great. Appreciate that. Um, I think it's going to be a great activity and it's what a great cause. Like I really wish I could be there. Hopefully you guys can find, find a way to stop over there. Um, I just got to thank Chief Warren again and, and, and Mr. Douglas, like honestly, like I was trying to work on Friday and like my neighbors were freaking out about this homeless camp and, um, stuff that had been going on in the middle of the night. And like Chief Warren had his guys down there searching for this camp. They found another camp. And, uh, then they found other nefarious stuff going on in the, in one of the parking lots, like, and then they left for a while, then they came back and were searching for this camp. And then the guy came out suddenly at like dusk. The guy we were looking for came out to his truck. And I mean, and I don't know what his hours are supposed to be, but it was on. It was about eight or nine at night. And it was, it was on like we were, you know, we were, we were looking for these guys and his guys went down there in the dark with these guys, which I just, I cannot imagine heading into those woods with some of those homeless people. Um, yeah, so.
Go right back to the mayor.
Not many people are going to take phone calls from the residents, rush out to their car and follow the people for us. So, because we've had a, we searched everywhere in these woods looking for this group of people. And three times and couldn't find them. We couldn't find them. So we asked the neighbors, hey, call us immediately if you see them. You know, let us know. And they got ahold of the mayor, the mayor got ahold of me and he was following, we were on a three-way call with the officer and, and, uh, it was really good. Uh, because we wouldn't have been able to resolve it. And like I said, you don't have a lot of people that are going to rush out in the middle of the night and try to do that to serve the city. And I know that everyone here in this room, including you guys, would do that. So, and you deserve the credit just as much. So thanks.
And I just, and then, and then I guess it was yesterday, I got a, a message, hey, there's a big homeless camp down here for one of my neighbors. And, uh, I just, I just, I feel bad reaching out to Chief Warren all the time, but then there's pictures on there of the public works and these guys out there hauling so much debris out of the woods. Um.
Toilet out there.
Oh.
And like I said, Sean's guys, you call anyone from the fire department, any department, we call, we work as a team and they showed up.
Yeah.
We got a bunch of us who were able to pick it up in no time. If it was just a couple of us, it would have been a hard, dirty job, but when you work together, it's easy.
The camp that they ended up finding that they couldn't find all day was on the east side of the river. They were accessing it around the bridge, going up over, over the river and then coming back up the rail, rail yard. And they were hauling propane tanks. My neighbors were freaking out. They had them on cameras in the middle of the night hauling weird stuff back there. I didn't know what they were going to find, a meth lab. We didn't know what it was, but they were just, just as professionals could be. And then, I mean, it just made me so happy to see those pictures yesterday of them hauling that stuff out. So just thank you so much. Like it just, it, it makes it, it makes it easy to be the mayor. So thank you. I just appreciate it so much. So. Um, and that's all I have.
Mayor, did you want to make mention of Monday on your, your celebration? If any of them wanted to, your Memorial Day?
Oh, oh, uh, it's actually Friday.
Friday.
Yeah, Friday, we're going to be placing a wreath, um, at the, at the veterans memorial just out front here at ten AM. Um, if any of you want to stop over. Yeah, sorry. Um, yes, thank you very much. So yeah, Friday at ten AM, we'll just be placing a wreath, wreath there by the, by the fallen soldier memorial. So. And then it'll be there all weekend if anybody wants to stop by at the, at the memorial. Um, okay. Thank you for the reminder. And that is all. We would just need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
All right, we're adjourned.